Good afternoon. We'll now call the meeting of Waco City Council on December 3rd, 2019, to order at 3:00 PM. Welcome to our guests. All council members are present. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon to you and all the council members. There is one change to the agenda today. Resolution 2019-936 is being pulled from this agenda and will be brought back in a future agenda. Under employee recognition, I'd like to recognize the staff at the Convention Center for doing a great job setting up for HEB's Feast of Sharing today. And, of course, thank HEB and recognize them for their great community service that they do every year. And this is a fantastic annual community event. Takes a lot of preparation from HEB's team and our Convention Center teams. I wanted to thank both of them for our great event today. Under employee recognition, I'd like to recognize our new management, emergency management coordinator, Elizabeth Thomas. Elizabeth, would you please stand? Elizabeth is originally from Garland, Texas, and she has a bachelor's degree in political science from Texas A&amp;M University and a master's degree in public administration from the Bush School of Government and Public Service at Texas A&amp;M University. She was selected from a group of candidates to be our new coordinator and really excited to have Elizabeth on board. She has a great way of working with all the chiefs and the public safety people throughout McLennan County, and she has all of their support. So we're excited to bring her on board. And thank you for being our new coordinator.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Welcome aboard.
Also, under employee recognition, I'd like to recognize several employees who volunteer their time to deliver meals as part of the city staff team with Meals on Wheels. This is a team that Chief Bobby Tatum organizes and includes himself. Chief Tatum, there you go. Assistant City Manager Bradley Ford, right over here. And General Services Director Kelly Holochek, sitting there with the group. Assistant HR Director Lisa Wilcox, Lisa. And Housing Director Galen Price, Galen. And our Engineering Services Manager Amy Birlarly-Hyland. And I would like to thank all of them for their service to the community and the extra work that they do here. And extend an extra thank you to Lisa Wilcox from our HR department for delivering meals on Thanksgiving Day. And to Chief Tatum for putting the team together. I think they do a great job. Under informal reports, there is one informal report for you today. It has to do with the impact of I-35 construction on the Riverwalk there at the bridge there going across the river, both on the MLK side and the University Park side. And I believe Jonathan or Tom or both are here, if you have any questions. Jonathan, if you have any questions on that.
Just a quick question. I know that, I guess it hit me between the eyes, that it was going to be 36 months. I guess that's maybe the worst case where both sides of the Riverwalk would potentially be closed. And I just want to make sure we're thinking about alternative plans for people to get across the interstate through either going up on university parks or however. I know that you probably put some thought into that, Jonathan.
Yes, so we are working in close coordination with the contractor. And it's sort of a two-phase project. First is the demolition and then the actual rebuilding. So as of Monday, they will be starting. We've got bridges or barges that are going to be on the water. And so we will see an impact to both sides. The first is going to be the south side followed by the north side. Once we get the demolition complete, where we've got a plan in place and where there could be an intermittent gate, wind safety allows for people to be able to access the side of the river, really dependent on the construction schedule. In regards to that, also, we've looked at university parks and we'll have signage to direct people up to the sidewalks on university parks and make sure there is a pathway.
From the Riverwalk on up to...
Correct.
Just here's how to get across.
Correct. So once you get to that gate, you're able to see where to go up to get up to the sidewalk at university parks.
Okay. Thanks, Jonathan.
That's good. Appreciate your coordination of that. Thank you.
Jonathan, and I'd like to call on Larry Hosey to give the Hosey Report.
All right. Thank you very much. Pay attention to your monitors and let's look at some great pictures, too. The Texas Baptists came together in Waco for their annual convention from November the 17th through the 19th. Over 2,000 parishioners from all across Texas gathered at the Waco Convention Center for meetings and breakout sessions, filling every space to capacity. Planners thoroughly enjoyed their time in Waco and have chosen Waco for their 2020 convention. The Cavern Park Zoo now has a raptor exhibit for their educational birds, which includes a red-tailed hawk, paragon falcon, and a caracalla. The exhibit features an outside area where the three raptors will rotate for viewing and an educational porch where a keeper will occasionally have one on display for educational purposes. The new exhibit is in the Brazos River area and was built by zoo staff to look like a blacksmith shop. While school is out for Thanksgiving break, Bledsoe, Miller, Dewey, and South Waco Community Centers offered holiday camps for kids ages 5 to 13 from 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, where they took part in recreational activities, arts, crafts, and more. Winter camp will be offered for the December 23rd through January 3rd holidays for Christmas. University high school band kicked off this year's Sounds of the Season performances at the city hall yesterday. 16 area schools will be bringing their students to sing and play Christmas and other holiday music for city staff and visitors to enjoy. Each song performed will be produced into a music video and aired throughout the holiday season on our Waco City cable channel and posted on YouTube for students to share with relatives across the country. A list of the upcoming performances is at your place on your dais and is available online on our homepage at waco-texas.com. The countdown to the Census 2020 is well underway, and awareness and job equipment efforts continue to ensure a complete and accurate count in Waco. 2020 Census Ambassador trainings were held in October and November throughout Waco to provide important information about the upcoming census and how community partners can assist with engaging and informing on the importance of the complete and accurate count in Waco. Waco stands to lose $1,578 in funds per person per year for 10 years for each year not counted. And coming up, Waco Wonderland will be kicking off and being held at Heritage Square this Friday, December 6th, and running through Sunday, December 8th. And the Christmas parade on Saturday morning will move down Austin Avenue, starting at 10:00 AM. Waco Mammoth Site will celebrate its 20th anniversary on December 14th. Keep Waco Beautiful will hold their annual Chipping of the Green recycling event on Saturday, January 4th. And a curbside District 3 cleanup will be held on Saturday, January 18th. And that completes my report.
That's a great report, Larry. And I really appreciate all the work that's going into the Complete Count Committee and the Census. That work continues. It's very important, as you said. And we've really got to impress upon all our citizens the importance of a complete and accurate count. I also really appreciate the fact that you all are taking all the performances by those schoolkids and making them available online. That's terrific for their families across the country.
Oh, and I'd like to echo that. And just looking forward to the District 3 cleanup in mid-January. And we'd like to request the staff, if dumpsters are put out in neighborhoods along the streets for folks to dispose of stuff, if we could actually staff those, because I have borne witness to a lot of things going to those dumpsters that should not have been going into them. And so while I'm excited and glad and happy for this work that we're doing from our solid waste standpoint, I just want to make sure that we're being responsive to our citizens and that the things that actually should be going in the dumpsters are what's actually making their way into the dumpsters. So, thanks.
Thank you. Under resolutions today, there are 20. I wanted to touch on just a few of those. Resolution 2019-919 and 920, approve a business grant agreement, program project agreement with Zinc Power Waco. Milet Harrison, our Economic Development Director, will be here at work session to discuss those in more detail. Resolution 2019-924 ratifies an application with the Cooper Foundation and accepts acceptance of a $125,000 grant to fund housing and homelessness studies. I'd like to thank the Cooper Foundation for their assistance in these very important studies, and we're looking forward to getting these underway.
I also want to thank the Cooper Foundation for their partnership with this. I think it's very important that studies like this are taking place in our community. And for them, for their generous gift to the city of Waco, I really do appreciate their partnership. So I just really wanted to echo Wiley's sentiments of saying thank you to the Cooper Foundation.
I like that, because that is important. And we're working with the foundations on some of these initiatives that are sometimes hard to fund with taxpayer money. And they're joining in. We're kind of working together on these solutions. I think it's fantastic. So I appreciate Cooper Foundation helping out on that, too.
Thank you. Resolution 2019-926 approves a purchase agreement with Axon Enterprise in the amount not to exceed $836,000 over a nine-year period for the replacement of 65 Patrol in-car cameras, including accessories and maintenance agreement. These cameras integrate with the body worn cameras that the council approved at the last meeting. And the resolution authorizes initial payment for one year of the agreement in an amount not to exceed Resolution 2019-934 approves a contract for professional services with Fries &amp; Nichols to perform engineering services for the Lake Brazos Dam improvements, the project, in an amount not to exceed $538,000. And council heard a presentation on the work we're going to be doing there, the concept of what we'd be doing at the dam. Hopefully, we can get that designed fairly quickly and get that bid next year.
Good.
Under ordinances, there are seven today. The first two are first readings. The first one, ordinance 2019-938, has to do with a developer participation agreement with the Blake at Waco. And this is for some additional storm drainage improvements that the city needed as part of that project. So we're participating in that. Resolution 2019-939 is the first reading on an ordinance amending Chapter 13 license permits and business regulations for bed and breakfast facilities and short-term rental facilities to address the length of the license, density, and parking requirements. And Clint is here, if y'all have any questions on that item.
I just had the one question on the second ordinance that's in the first reading about the STRs. And specifically, in the supporting documentation in the package, we are, and I need to understand this better, the last kind of condition of the change is we're removing the maximum number of units permitted in SCR type 3s where the units are individually owned and located in C4 zoning, which is downtown. That, and Clint, I'm glad you're up there. Right now, it's limiting it to five units in this kind of configuration? And now we're taking that limitation off entirely? Is that the correct way to interpret?
Yes, sir. That's correct. But it would only be for the multifamily buildings that are...
That are downtown.
Downtown and condo buildings where the units are individually owned. So for rental apartment units, that...
The five is going to apply.
Okay.
And Clint, I don't know if you have the answer to this, but do you know how many buildings downtown that will affect?
So we actually looked at that. It looks like it currently would only impact two buildings, the Altra Lofts and the Barron's Lofts that were just recently converted from a rental to condos.
But it will set the precedence for going forward as well, correct?
That's correct.
So it could have some long-term...
Correct. For downtown C4 properties. So for other zoning condo buildings around, you know, Baylor University, the five unit max would still apply.
Go ahead.
The purview of downtown, are we looking at, by what?
So we're...
Considering tip?
The zoning district, C4 zoning district.
Within the downtown, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the rationale for removing that restriction? I just, you know, because we're wanting to promote higher density in terms of actual residency downtown. And having this that actually takes away from units that could be used for actual, either owner-occupied or renters. I mean, again, I'm a huge STR fan myself, but I also think limits are reasonable on that. So what was the kind of the rationale behind?
So this was actually a request of one of the building owners for us to consider this. And then when we started looking at C4 zoning, which already allows commercial uses and hotels, and then the fact that this would only apply to owner-occupied units, we felt like, you know, having a limited number in that status currently would not have an impact on the overall affordability or, I guess, the nature, character of having people live in downtown.
Because we can do, we can build a hotel in a C4 right now, right?
That's correct.
So it's like, what's the, it's still consistent with, I don't know, if someone wanted to convert an apartment complex to a hotel, I just don't know. Personally, I don't have a personal problem with that, as long as it's in an area that's owned correctly, because it's property rights and the ability to do that in an area where the expectation is that there could be a hotel there, so.
And I see your point. I think my view is a little bit differently. I am more conservative about that. I think, you know, actually, I'm okay with the entire ordinance with the exception of that last bullet point. So my question really is to our city attorney, Jennifer, if we wanted to approve the ordinance, we can change it where we could approve the ordinance without that last stipulation, correct?
That's correct.
We can make that change.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, and I look at that part in the context of, we've got a lot of hotels coming online in the next 24 months, I hope, you know, or some sooner than that. I mean, looking down there on the river and seeing all that dirt moving around and those foundations being poured is very exciting. But those people were building the hotels with the understanding, I think, that this kind of change wouldn't take place with current condo units. Maybe they didn't get that deep into the logic, but it does seem like we're changing the rules a little bit, in my, one way to look at it. And housing stock, to John's point.
And that was a concern of ours as well. I think the property owner that requested it was looking at where you have a building where you have, you know, multiple owners, you know, more than five owners, where, let's just say, there are 60 units and you have 60 different owners in that building.
Okay.
Limit it to five, then there's 55 owners that don't have that opportunity to...
I get it.
Have that. Where a total rental building, you know, you have just one owner, and that gives them an option to do limited numbers of short-term rentals, but it doesn't preclude anybody from doing short-term rentals in the building.
The limiting factor there would have to be the distance then, right? I mean, because if you have all the different condo owner, in a condo regime, there...
Right. Yeah, the distance rule, the 500-foot, does not apply to STR.
Okay. We run next door to each other.
That's right. Yeah.
Jim, to your point, though, I mean, there's a lot of apartments coming online downtown with the riverfront development. And I, yeah, I just think it's, it seems like it's one of those things where it's zoned to where if you build a hotel there, I don't know why you couldn't. If someone could buy that unit and convert it into a hotel, I don't understand.
And did you say this came at the request of one person, the change?
Yes, sir. There was one of the building owners that was converting it to a condo that asked us to look into it.
Or her specifically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have. Me, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Clint. The remaining five ordinances are all second reading. And if there are no questions, that concludes my report.
Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
And Mayor and council, may I add that Councilmember Mika has filed an affidavit of substantial interest for ordinance 2019-941.
Okay. Is that...
I'm better for the ordinance.
All right. Seeing none, the consent agenda tonight will include resolutions 2019-917 through 2019-937, with the exception of Resolution 2019-936, which was pulled from the agenda, unless a visitor card is received on a consent agenda item. And now I will turn it back to Wiley for the next work session presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've rearranged the order of the work session presentations out of necessity. And so I'm asking our friend, former mayor and professor Mike Morrison, to be first with a discussion of the redistricting process, possibly resulting from the 2020 census.
Welcome, Mike.
I'm not used to speaking while I'm seated, so we'll stay on this one. I'd like to present a little target. Wiley tells me he's going to tell Larry to turn this microphone off in 15 minutes. I want to use this time in the way that's most helpful to the council. I've got a number of slides that Larry has. Each of you can have copies of, of course. The slides from one end to the other give a reasonable overview of the redistricting process, specifically what happened after the 2010 census and what may happen after the next. The very tail end, there are a couple of demographic slides that deal with the county and the state and the city with 2019 and 2020 estimates that may be of some use. So what I thought I would do is just sort of move through these and pick things that I think you might be interested in, but invite you to stop me at any point, and we'll proceed in a way that makes the most sense to the council. That's what he told me not to do.
Okay.
All right. The first thing is, the question often comes up, is who decides what the plan's going to be like? And it's the six members of this council. Unless somebody goes to court and gets this overruled, you are the six people and the only six people who can determine what this plan looks like. My job is not to tell you how to redistrict. My job is to get you as close to how you want to redistrict as the law allows. So during the process, I will attempt to show you some things that could create problems, as well as some things that I think would get smooth sailing. But anytime I have something like that, it's nothing more than a discussion level. So the limitations on your authority are essentially from the, you can see here, Fifth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment, equal protection issues. The Fifth Amendment applies equal protection to the federal government, the Fifteenth Amendment to the states, the Fourteenth Amendment, of course, is one of the equal rights amendments that came after the Civil War that I want to show you a little bit about. Then we've got Texas Constitution, election code, local government code, government code, your own charter and ordinances, all of which we take into account. On the equal protection, there are two things that we're concerned with. One is quantitative, and that is simply one person, one vote. We have to balance population among the five single-member districts within tolerances that are acceptable under the Constitution. If we have too many people in a district compared to the others, we say the people in that district are underrepresented. Each vote counts for less because there are more of them. If there are too few people, they're overrepresented for the converse of the same argument. It's a little counterintuitive, but one person, one vote has nothing to do with voters. It deals with those who are being represented. And whether you're a voter or a non-voter, a voting age or not voting age, you are being represented by the representative of the majority choice. And as we go through some of these protections provided by the Constitution and the Voting Rights Act, none of them are designed to protect any of you. They're all designed to protect the voters. And so that's basically what we get out of this. And whatever else we do at the end of the process, we have to have the population within those tolerances. And I'll show you in a minute how that would work. The reason it applies to local governments like the city until Avery versus Midland County, which Lyndon Olson Senior, who was once the city attorney here, took to the United States Supreme Court for Hank Avery, you can see from this slide that the Avery, the Midland County Commission, Midland County had 67,000, well, had about 70,000 people. Almost 68,000 lived in the city of Midland, and the remainder of the county, 852, 414, 828. And the way that was redistricted was the city of Midland was one commissioner precinct, and the other three commissioner precincts were the other 2,000 people. So the city of Midland had the mayor's vote because they could elect the mayor, excuse me, the county judge, and one commissioner, which means every time a vote came up that split the city or the county, it was three to two. And the U.S. Supreme Court said that local governments, in fact, more directly affect people's lives than state governments or the federal government. So at this point in 1968, we applied one person, one vote, which is the first time we had to balance population. In determining what's acceptable on one person, one vote, you determine, in our case, we would take the census population for 2020, we'd divide it by five for each of the single-member districts. That number would be the ideal population. If every district had one-fifth of the Waco population, you would be perfectly equally distributed. You don't have to make it perfect, because if you did, some son of a gun would move just to make you do it again. But you have to stay within a tolerance. And the tolerances that have been accepted by the courts are roughly 10%. If the variance in population between the district with the most and the district with the least is under 10% of the ideal, then that's considered to be a safe harbor. But we typically shoot for 3% or 4%. You also look at an average deviation, which doesn't hold nearly as much sway, but that's simply the average among all five districts. So when you're looking at the actual population count, that's the variance in population. When you consider that as a percentage of the ideal, it's how much we deviate, for you statisticians, how much we deviate from that ideal. This is what we looked at in 2010, when we looked at the 2010 census of the 2001 redistricting. If you go to the far right column, you'll see that the districts were out of tolerance. One and two were low, 7.5%, 8.65% low. Three was high by 13.5%. Four was low by almost 16%, and five was high by a little over 18%. Down at the bottom in the yellow, you can see the maximum deviation. And you can see it was about three times the constitutionally accepted tolerance. So if nothing else, we knew from that point that we would have to redistrict the Waco City Council or be in violation of the U.S. Constitution, as well as Texas statutes, which require your plan to be within 10%. In balancing population, then our concern turns to the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendments, and here the Fifth and Fourteenth, that deal with equal protection on a qualitative as opposed to a quantitative standpoint. And that is, you know, citizens shall not be denied or abridged vote by the United States or any state on account of race, color, or previous conditions of servitude. We've added to that considerations of ethnicity, for example. And Congress shall have the power to enforce this article by appropriate legislation, which it did in 1965 with the Voting Rights Act. The Voting Rights Act in 1965 required that states, counties, cities, school districts avoid diluting minority access to the process. And if changes were made, avoided retrogressive changes, which would make any new plan less capable of allowing minorities to elect the candidate of their choice in the prior plan. Under the enforcement provisions of '65, you had to get preclearance through the Justice Department. And Texas didn't come under those enforcement provisions until the 1975 amendments. In 1975, in addition to literacy tests, grandfather clauses, property ownership, some of the traditional South bases for trying to prevent people from voting, the Congress added the use of a single-language, English-only ballot when you have 5% or more single-language, non-English-speaking minority. That caught Texas, and it was retroactive to any change made since the presidential election of 1972. From 1972 forward until three years ago, we had to preclear every change. This will be the first redistricting for the city where we don't have to go through either the District Court of the District Columbia or the U.S. Attorney General's Office, the Voting Rights Section of the Civil Rights Division, to get preclearance. The reason preclearance was required was because the southern states in particular, anytime a plan that was held unconstitutional was thrown out, they would come up with another discriminatory device, and it would take three or four years to work its way through the courts. So the preclearance provision was designed to stay one step ahead of the courts. You couldn't lawfully implement a plan that affected voting until it had been precleared by the Justice Department or the District Court of Columbia. In 1982, Congress added discriminatory effect to discriminatory intent as a violation of the Voting Rights Act, which meant even if you weren't trying to discriminate, if the plan you came up with was discriminatory, it was either retrogressive or it diluted minority access, that was a violation of the Voting Rights Act. The Voting Rights Act, Section 2, dilution, what you typically hear about is cracking or packing. Packing would be taking a city like Waco, where if you look at our percentages, we have three council districts that have very significant total minority majorities. If you were to squeeze those into two instead of three, you'd leave one that was at four right now, which was not represented by a minority member, but where total minority voters have control. You could move people out of that into one and two. It wouldn't make either of them any stronger. It wouldn't make either of them any stronger, and it would weaken the chances of the voters in four to elect a candidate of their choice from a minority standpoint. Cracking is where you take an insular concentration that could be, could elect a candidate of their choice, and you split it among one or more, which is what, of course, Texas does every time with Travis County. And it has nothing to do with minorities in Travis County unless you consider Democrats a minority. Retrogression is where, as I've said, you introduce a change, which makes it more difficult for people to access the political process. That could be as little as changing a polling place, moving it from someplace it's easy to get to to someplace that's not lighted, it's not safe, it doesn't have a paved parking lot, it's not air-conditioned. All of those changes that affected voting had to be, they no longer have to be precleared, but they did until three years ago. Poster child for retrogression, Gomillion versus Lightfoot. City of Tuskegee used to be, was square, and the state legislature decided that they would redefine the city boundaries. And they went from a square to the court, Supreme Court says, a strangely irregular twenty-eight-sided figure, which just happened to have the effect of removing all blacks except four or five from the city without removing a single white voter or resident. It was purely serendipitous, they said. U.S. Supreme Court thought otherwise, and that's sort of the poster child, just like Avery versus Midland County is the poster child for one person, one vote. Here's the, when we came out of 2010, when I did the redistricting, you can see the plan that you're under now, those are the population numbers that existed under the 2010 census. And you can see we brought down the maximum deviation to under four percent. This board of estimate you see over on the far right is, it's not a complex formula, but it's one we don't need to get into now. But since the mayor's elected at large, and so everybody in the city has the chance to vote for two council members, under a Supreme Court case on Board of Estimates versus Morris, we were able to factor that in, and so it takes the maximum deviation three-seven-seven down to an effective deviation of three-point-one-four. So that's what that's for. And at the very bottom, you know, what's the chance that we're going to find ourselves equally populated this next time? Traditional redistricting criteria, Bush v. Vera, Justice O'Connor, in her concurring opinion, has sort of laid out a roadmap and says, Section Two of the Voting Rights Act, which requires you to avoid dilution, is a legitimate governmental basis for taking race or ethnicity into account. But what she says in that opinion is if that's the only factor taken into account, then you've probably created a reverse racial gerrymander, which is also a violation of equal protection. So some of the traditional criteria, maintaining the core of existing districts. The people who elected Jim, if we keep them together, get to stay with the person they've represented. It's not to protect Jim, it's to protect the people in District Five and on down the line. Protecting incumbency, again, not to protect any of you, but each of you was selected by the voters of your district. And so ideally, we wouldn't pair two of you in a new redistricting because if we have, voters have been deprived of one of the people they've elected. Okay? If anybody were paired, under Texas law, you would continue to serve the remainder of your term. But if you have two council members in the same district, obviously, at some point, only one's going to be there. And so you try to avoid that. We use existing election precincts. If I voted at the Bethel Baptist Church for the last five years, I don't want to find out on voting day that I have to go to the Lions Club. Now, you've solved that problem for McLennan County and Waco with the way you vote now, so that really isn't an issue for the city, but it's a traditional criteria. Communities of interest here, doesn't really apply to partisanship, it's just if you have groups that have, for example, you have a housing area that has very politically active people who are very supportive of, and you move all of them out. That's what the state kept doing to Chet Edwards' district. They kept moving out people that would vote for Chet and trying to move in people that didn't know him. And so that's where you've moved or split a community of interest. Compactness and contiguity, that means you can't have a barbell-shaped-looking district. You can't have this fiction of connecting two parts that aren't really together. An example of where you have exceptions is the way McGregor comes out to their airport, where we go out to TSTC, where it wasn't done just to, well, it wasn't done nefariously, it was done for a legitimate governmental reason. And unless we wanted to take in no man's land and Balmody, there was no other way to get there. Natural or physical boundaries, idea here is you ought to be able to see it on the ground. If someone says you live in District Five and you live out by the lake, or you're going out towards McGregor, you ought to be able to walk up and see on the ground either a natural or a man-made boundary, says, okay, that's where the district ends, so I know I'm in the district, or I know I'm out of the district. City limits, boundaries make that difficult sometimes because they largely follow meets-and-bounds descriptions instead of streets. You know, you're gonna, you're not going to go down the middle of the street and leave half of them out of the city, you're going to go down to the property line at the other side of the block, which means now you're on the meets-and-bounds. And so one of the things we have to do is in coming up with maps that allow us to judge the population, we've got to make sure all the new annexations or any changes that have been made since the last redistricting are accurately reflected on the map. I'm almost done. Duties of the office, strangely enough, largely ignored.
I find this fascinating, so please keep going. Yeah, take your time.
Duties of the office, strangely enough, are largely ignored. It seems a strange thing. The exception to that would be perhaps Texas county commissioners, where you don't have a unified system, or a county engineer, where each commissioner has a road and bridge budget. And I tell you what, you've never seen such serious horse trading as when they get into deciding who's going to take what bridge. I mean, there are people who'll keep their mother-in-law before they'll take that bridge. I'm sorry. All right. So this last slide is, and it's redistrict, I don't know what criteria is, but I'm the one who typed that, and I just now saw on that third bullet below, it sounds like it's from Eastern Europe, but it should be criteria, I apologize. That's just a summary. And then what follows, I won't get into now at a time, but this gives you 2000, 2010 and 2020, 2010 census, 2020 estimates. Based on this, each council district, if they were all equally divided now, would need another 2,675 people. You're more familiar with your district than I am, but I'll bet you, none of your districts are exactly 2,675 people low, which means lines are going to have to change. This is simply an estimate of McLennan County versus the state of Texas. Those figures don't exist for Waco. All the red numbers show a decrease from the census before, and take some time to look at this later. What you're going to see is when we talk about Texas no longer having a majority race or ethnicity, we're there. And what you can tell from this slide is that that was going, that will continue a pace. And the estimates for 2030, 2040, 2050, that's way out. But ten years in advance, Texas demographer and the census provisional estimates have always done a pretty good job. So I don't expect the 2020 census to be way off the 2019 estimates that you have on that earlier slide. Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, I'm available for questions or to leave at your discretion.
The questions you have.
Taking notes like crazy, I keep thinking Professor Morrison's going to ask me to write an essay on redistricting here.
Been a long time, hasn't it, Jim?
Yes. It's been a long, long time. But I appreciate the presentation and all you do for, you've got such great experience in this field, and the fact that we're able to tap into your experience and intelligence on this deal here in Waco, it's, it's exciting. I need you statewide as well, and I appreciate the work you're going to be doing for us.
Looking forward to working with you all, yeah.
Thank you.
What would the timing be? I mean, you know, Census Day is April 1st, so everybody needs to know.
Census is always held on April Fool's Day.
Yeah.
Because we all know it wasn't accurate the day it was taken, we'd pretend it was. The PL 940171 requires it to be delivered to the president, the results, not later than December 31st. It will then go out to the states, and it will go out in a rolling order. Those like Texas that have the early primary, you know, the Super Tuesday primary, we will get them first. Last time, we got them toward the end of the first week or beginning of the second week in February. It then takes a couple more weeks to get them inputted into the state's computers and local computers and usable for them. So I would think it's going to be March of 2021 before we know exactly what the census says for each of the five districts.
And, well, first of all, thank you again, Mr. Morrison, for the presentation. I've had the opportunity to sit down with you twice now and go over this, and it's honestly been a true pleasure for me. And so thank you for the information that you have provided for us. To piggyback a little bit on Councilmember Canora's question, once March 2021 is here and we have the info from the census, how does the redistricting process look like? Is there a committee that does that? Or is there a group of people that redraw the lines and then bring it back to council? Can you go, explain a little bit of what that process looks like, please, sir?
I can tell you what my recommendation will be, but that's contingent upon what the council decides it wants the process to be. But this will be my forty-second year of doing this, and so I at least want to make a recommendation. The last time, and each time I've done this in the past, we've asked the governmental entity to form a citizens advisory committee. The last time what happened is each council member picked two, including the mayor, and then the mayor picked a chair. I would then meet with that committee and spend about ninety minutes doing what I just did with you all in ten or fifteen, making sure, and by the time I met with them, we would have the answer to, are we malapportioned, and if so, by how much. Working with the council regularly, but you would appoint members of that committee, you would want to appoint people that were representative of your district.
Okay.
And who were known and well-respected within your district, so that people have confidence in their judgment. That's very helpful to me because these committees regularly find something that all the rest of us overlook. The last time in the city of Waco, when we were looking at South Waco, we got to one of the very last public hearings, one of the members of that committee pointed out that there was an apartment setting, a complex under construction, and based upon the planning, it was going to make a significant change to the minority population. And initially, that was in District Three, but because of noticing that, we moved it out of District Three into District Two. So that committee is very helpful in that regard, to keep us from overlooking something. Also, it helps us, one, if they're well thought of, if I do my job, if we're thoughtful about this, they become salespeople to the extent that other people might not have had the time to sit in and then hear what you've heard. If they hear someone they know and they have confidence in, and it's not some lawyer drifting in from Baylor, they may find that a much more credible source. So it's substantively helpful, and it's also helpful when we go to public hearings. I would suggest, last time we had three public hearings, we had one and two, one and three, and we had one here, well, in the old meeting, old room. Probably makes sense if we're going to have public hearings, rather than have one here, have one in each of your council districts.
Sure.
So that everybody who wants, and they're open to everybody. So it's a very public process. We want the public hearings to be well noticed and well attended. We want to, really want to encourage people to point out things that think are problems. I truly want to hear issues people have with things because, one, it may be I know something they don't know, and I can put their mind to ease. Or two, maybe like what I just mentioned, they've come up with an idea that I hadn't thought of that's better than what I thought. And three, if they're not buying what I'm selling, and I don't agree with what they're doing, at least I know where they're coming from and can inform the council, and we can decide how you want to deal with it.
Okay.
Is that responsive?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for that. Thank you. And thank you for the presentation once again.
I wanted to ask a question of your professional opinion, Mr. Morrison. Thank you again for bringing your informative data as you always do. I too have sat with you some time to really get a hold onto this as we're beginning to go into such a pivotal period. With there being, you know, no longer the requirement of preclearance in the state of Texas, what challenges do you foresee?
It's hard to know, and again, that's where the citizen's input can be very helpful. There's almost always someone who's going to be upset. I know you all have never had to deal with that as a council. You know, one of the things that we used to have was, once the Justice Department precleared something, it convinced a lot of people that everything was okay. Without that, there may be some people who remain unconvinced, have no control over that. It's very seldom in the past have I had a plan that has become the subject of litigation. None of them have ever been changed. What our job is, and even though we no longer have the preclearance requirements, what I will suggest as we go through the process to your city attorney and your city secretary's office, is we compile pretty much the same sort of data that we've done in the past for preclearance submission, so that we have that on hand. If there is a challenge, then we don't have to scurry around and try to find it. It's pretty easy to pull together as you go through the process. It's much more difficult if you wait until there's a challenge and then you hunt for it. And you also have, as your attorneys will tell you on the state, you also have more credibility with information that's been developed during the process, as opposed to that which is developed in anticipation of litigation.
Awesome. Thank you.
Can I ask you a follow-up question to that, though? You'd say that any of the regulations that would have been caught in the preclearance are still, would still be available for citizens to challenge. So just because there, we don't have to walk through the preclearance process anymore does not mean that there are not the same sort of regulations requiring, in other words, if someone, if we don't do this correctly, the citizen will still have the opportunity to challenge.
And I'm glad you asked that because there's, even among lawyers, there's a misconception that the Supreme Court's opinion says Section Five no longer applies. The preclearance provisions of Section Five no longer apply, but Section Four and Section Five dealing with retrogression continue to be the law. So we don't have to go through the mother may I process, but if we were to develop a plan, and, may I take a minute? Under Section Five, any plan we develop, any change will be compared to what was changed. So what did we have before? If our change has made it more difficult for minorities to elect the candidate of their choice, and we could have avoided that, for example, if it had to be that way to balance population, then one person, one vote trumps. But if you could balance population and avoid retrogression, you would have to establish that you had a legitimate governmental basis for accepting a retrogressive plan. That's still the law. Under Section Two, dilution, you don't compare the plan, for example, if, let's say you don't change anything. Let's say that we get the census back and we're in tolerance, and we say, we're not going to make any changes. But somebody sits down with their computer and they say, you know what, you could have one more really strong minority district in Waco if you would just do it. Well, Section Five doesn't apply because there's no change, it's not retrogressive. But if you could have had better minority representation than you have, Section Two says, that could, that's dilution, and again, you need a legitimate governmental basis for not making that change. So Section Five compares what you propose to what you had before. Section Two compares what you have to a hypothetical plan that could be better, and if it could be better, they want to know why. Which is a really good reason why we want to have plenty of minority and public input, because if somebody sees something that would make it better that I haven't seen, I'd sure like to find that out during the process.
Well, and my hope, my initial hope is that we'll do the right work to where there won't be any basis for any challenge, or everyone will feel comfortable about it. But what I, the reason why I brought up the question was, to the extent that someone does get concerned that the preclearance is not a required process anymore, the law still remains, that we can't, that there will be safeguards in place, that there will be legal opportunities for people to challenge, and that there won't be an opportunity for cities across the state, including ours, to take advantage of not having the preclearance process to allow for discrimination.
Again, I've literally drawn, I would say thousands of plans over forty-three years, usually represent fifty to sixty governmental entities, including the state. This time, I'm going to limit it to a very small number, which is why I'm here today instead of a year from now, because I want to give folks that I've worked with in the past, I'd like to work with you again. past, I'd like to work with you again. My job, Dylan, is to make sure that we identify those problematic areas, and, and, you know, by, by the end of the process, I think you're going to be comfortable with what you know and with the decision the council makes. If I see anything on there that I, that I think is questionable, I'll bring it to your attention early on. At the end, there should be no surprises if I've done my job right. Now, that doesn't mean my clients always follow my advice, but I've never had a client get in trouble following my advice, and the state has ignored my advice a good bit of the time, and they've gotten in trouble every time.
I love it.
Any other questions?
No.
Oh, thank you all very much.
Wait, Mike, I do want to ask one thing. I want to clear one thing up, which, first, thank you very much for your presentation. I think everybody here can see how experienced you are and knowledgeable in this area, and it's very helpful, and we're, I feel well represented. I do want to be sure that people understand, because I've heard misconceptions about this, that what we're talking about here today is just the city of Waco's redistricting.
Right.
And that even though you've thrown in some examples of, like Chet Edwards and his district, we're not, we, as a city government, do not have any impact or any authority to impact the redistricting that's done at the state and federal level.
All, all the city has authority to do is the council district lines, its election precinct lines, and its polling places. And the latter two have been done in conjunction with MCC, WISD, and the county for 30 years. So that's why I, those were clearly just examples, because that's where it happened.
Sure. Yep, yep. Okay. Great.
As a board member of the Cooper Foundation, I want to thank you for letting us have Larry Growth while we had him, and now Dale Fissler. If we could just get Dale to come out of his shell. But I wanted also to, to note, in addition to Cooper, the Waco Foundation and Rappaport Foundation are all extraordinarily supportive of this city, and we're really proud to be a part of it.
Agreed. Thank you, Mike.
Mayor and Council, our next presentation is a discussion of the Animal Services Public Hearing Agenda Item. We have Assistant City Attorney David Shaw here to lead that discussion.
Also a major lawyer drifting in. Mayor and Council, tonight we have on the agenda a public hearing to consider an appeal of a decision by the Animal Welfare Board Subcommittee granting a variance to allow one horse to reside at 4608 Cole Avenue, just off Boski over by the Extra Co. Events Center. This appeal is brought by a neighbor at 4608 Colonial. The way this got started, the residents at 4608 Cole, Mr. and Ms. Saravia Alvarado contacted Animal Services about potentially bringing a horse to the residence, so the horse wasn't there already. Animal Services informed them that they would need a variance granted by the Animal Welfare Board, and the way that works is a subcommittee of three members of the board meet to hear that. That subcommittee did meet and hear the variance request on November 8th. At the meeting, the parents presented information to the subcommittee that they needed the horse to continue equine therapy for a child that has cerebral palsy. The horse had been in Henderson, Texas. They'd been traveling about three hours to do that therapy, and that they were requesting permission to bring the horse to Waco so that they could do therapy more frequently. Two neighbors also attended the hearing and spoke in opposition to keeping the horse there. Their concerns primarily revolved around the animal's well-being, that it being kept on a residential lot, the lots, just a standard residential lot, about .23 acres. Also, the byproducts of having livestock, things like waste and pests and things of that nature. After considering the neighbor's concerns and the parents' concerns, the subcommittee did ultimately approve the variance through May 31st, 2020, with these conditions. They will be required to provide adequate shelter prior to the horse's arrival, something to keep the rain and that kind of thing off in the backyard, daily manure removal and maintenance, fly control is needed, water and food provided for the horse, of course, and one visit, at least one visit, from animal control during the variance period. Now, before and after any of these kind of variance hearings, like anything else the city does, we send notices out and that kind of thing. So Animal Services sent notices to the neighbors advising them they had the opportunity under our city ordinances to appeal the granting of a variance to the city council. This is such an appeal. Our ordinances allow those neighbors to come in and say, basically, want, we want to look at it again. The statutes or the ordinances that govern this are attached in your agenda packets at 599. It's 23 and 24 in following. A couple of things to note. Below at the original hearing, the burden is on the applicant to establish why a variance to the general rule that livestock are prohibited within the city limits. The applicant has the burden to establish why a variance is warranted. Here at the appeal, the burden has shifted to the neighbor to say why the subcommittee's decision should be overturned. Second, this is not a pure appeal in the sense of you're limited to only what was developed at that Animal Welfare Board meeting. You're free to develop new testimony, ask any questions. The applicant, the respondents, anybody can present new information that they may not have originally brought to the subcommittee, and of course, all that's before you as you make your decision. At the end, you will have three options. You may affirm the subcommittee's order granting the variance, subject to the original conditions the subcommittee had placed on the variance. You may overrule the order effectively denying the variance, or you may modify the order granting the variance with different conditions, or a mixture of all the new conditions or no conditions, or however you see fit.
Any questions?
I've got just a couple of questions on this one. Um, let me get going here. Where am I? Now, there was limited neighborhood opposition, right? There, there was only one, was it two people, or was it one property for the?
There were two neighbors from two separate properties.
Okay. And how many, how many notices were sent out, and then, was this handled by Clint, your staff, or was it handled by?
No, this is Animal Services. This is Danielle Tate and her staff. And the way this 200 rule, foot rule works, out of an abundance of caution, Animal Services sent notices to anyone that, that circle would touch, and so some of those may not touch the house, they touched the yard. And so I was told 51 notices went out apprising of the hearing, and of those two residents came and spoke.
Okay. And nothing else in writing or via email or anything?
No, concerning the appeal, I believe an email was submitted to the city secretary's office, but not at the original variance hearing by the subcommittee.
And so the, as I understand, reading the materials, this is, has a sunset of May 2020.
May 31st. The applicants originally came in and asked for one year. Apparently, what they presented to the subcommittee was that this is a year during the child's growth, where this, it's, has to do with skeletal placement and the bones growing in, equine therapy, kinds of things. And so they had asked for one year. The committee discussed doing a limited test to see what, what the effect of the horse might be, and so the subcommittee decided to do a six-month test ending at, kind of a test period, ending at May 31st, 2020.
And then the ordinance itself has a provision of the, the space for the large animal, the horse, has to be at least 600 square foot, correct?
That's correct, and that's for any variance requested for any animal that, and it's even not a variance. Anytime, even if you had a five-acre tract in the middle of town, that enclosure, that pen, you couldn't put an animal inside a small pen, like, and I think about a hogsty or something like that.
Right.
The backyard would be the enclosure, and having measured it through the Google Maps device, it's well over 600 square feet.
I guess there's a reason that the ordinance is written like this, because, you know, having large animals in small yards is not what we're trying to do here, so this would definitely be an exception, and I appreciate the Animal Welfare Board kind of trying to figure out a, a rubric here that would work. One thing that does concern me, though, is liability, and I know there is equine liability insurance, and I would be more comfortable, and you, you buy this, I would be more comfortable protecting, protecting the city and neighbors from adding that to the, to the conditions, and making sure when the horse gets, it's a small place for a horse to be in anyway. A horse is probably going to be inclined to try to get out, and if it does get out, whatever damage it could cause the neighbors, I would like to make sure that that's, that liability is closed. So personally, I would like to add a liability portion to this if, if we, if it does go into effect.
Was there any, I mean, I can ask the applicant this tonight, but just some advance information. So the, the animal was originally three hours away, they wanted to bring it closer. I mean, was there any effort made to find suitable housing for it closer, a stable or something where they could just house a horse?
At the subcommittee hearing, the mother of the child did indicate that they had tried local equine therapy and had had, been inconvenienced by cancellations and things like that, had also tried something out of San Antonio, and they presented that to the subcommittee, so the subcommittee was aware of that.
Okay. There's hippotherapy out in McGregor, right? There's a, the firm out there called Reach Therapeutic Riding Center in McGregor, that's, you know, whatever, 15 minutes away from where they are. But I, I get it, there was evidently some issues there.
Jim, do you know how much an equine insurance policy costs?
I don't. I know what it might perhaps cost if you don't have it.
I'm not disagreeing with the idea, I'm just, in curiosity, I, I think that's an interesting idea, I was just curious what it costs.
I'd just like to close liability loops, and if the, if the, if that was, I would feel more comfortable, because it's sort of out of extraordinary, in my opinion, to have a horse in your backyard and, in town. And that's, again, why we have the ordinance, that you're not supposed to do that. But the neighbors evidently, you know, there wasn't a great number of them that, that I think they're supportive of the applicant, except for two of them. So from my perspective, I don't want to see that horse getting out and kicking everything down and, you know, creating, creating havoc in, in the, in the neighborhood.
Does that, I'm, I have no idea, and I'm, I'm not saying it's a bad idea to do that, I'm just curious, this, does a normal home insurance policy not cover that? Like if a dog, in the same way that a dog?
Possibly.
It's a horse, so.
I don't know. I don't know. If it's just small animals or large animals?
I don't know.
You can't get equine liability insurance, and I don't know if this is included in the standard homeowner's policy, but I didn't have time.
Outful, I do know. Jennifer, I mean, you brought up city liability. Is there any liability that we'd be exposed to by this? Putting you on the spot, can you get back to us, maybe?
I don't, don't believe so. I mean, obviously, anybody can sue us for anything, whether or not they would win is a whole separate issue. And I just want to remind, Council, that the public hearing is tonight at the 6 o'clock meeting, and, and Dave is just here to provide y'all information, but not to in any way testify.
That's right. Great.
Was the public hearing held at the Animal Welfare Board?
At 9:00 AM on November 8th.
But it was a subcommittee of the, of the welfare board, not, not the entire board.
It was a three-person subcommittee of the board.
And, and was there any, I don't see it on the variance conditions, but anything about fencing, making sure that the fence was high enough, that the horse wouldn't easily get out, make sure, it wasn't a four-foot fence versus a six-foot fence, something like that?
The applicant said that the backyard is covered with a mixture of privacy and chain link fence.
Okay. But they didn't specify how high the fence was?
Or, or on that, the condition thereof?
Right, exactly.
Not that I know of, but Animal Services has been out there to check on the property. To my knowledge, the horse is not out there yet, they're, they're still waiting to build that shelter, I suppose. But that's one of the conditions of Animal Services going to check for that, among other things.
But we have anybody, I'm sorry. No, 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 finish, finish.
I was just going to say, that was my next question, to see if they've already started building the, the shelter for the horse, but you just said they haven't, right?
I, I don't, I do not know.
Oh, you do not know, okay.
But, but they haven't brought the horse yet, is my understanding.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And then my question was, will we have anybody here from Animal Services tonight if we have questions for them?
Yes, Sir. Danielle Tate, the Animal Services Director, and also Jen Morris, the Animal Control Supervisor, are here and will be here tonight also to answer any questions.
Okay, okay. Do you remember when, during the hearing, whether the, the applicant who was granted the variance provided any kind of prescription or, or evidence of a prescription from a, from a professional that this child needed this kind of therapy?
The child was in attendance. The child needs the therapy.
But, but did a professional prescribe this horse therapy for the child? Do you remember?
That would be a question for the applicant. There was lots of testimony that this was part of an ongoing severely disabled child.
Okay. All right. I'm waiting to ask that tonight. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Danielle.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mayor and Council, our next work session presentation is a discussion of the Economic Development Public Hearing and Contract Agenda items. Milet Harrison, Executive Director of Economic Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to go over just a couple of items that we have on your agenda. One is a policy item, so it is our tax, business tax abatement policy that we bring back before you for, to, to re-adopt. And then the project item regarding Zinc Power, which is a new company to town, both a business grant and Economic Development Corporation grant to that entity. So for tax abatement policy, the reauthorization that we have normally done is, is required every two years by state law, so this is something that we do periodically in accordance with the law. The current policy will expire in January. We have some anticipated changes that we have heard you voice over the, over the past years, we've had different projects and talked about things, but we anticipate there will be some changes in association with, association with the Strategic Economic Development Study. So we made some changes we thought absolutely needed to happen right now, and, and would wait until we go through the, the review with the Strategic Economic Development Study to do anything further at this time, but we do have some changes that we proposed for you today. So one is updating our Designated Areas map. Predominantly, the change regarding that is, there was a new CDBG map, Community Development Block Grant map, provided to the city by HUD. So that's a layer of that multi-layer map, so it, it will change. We have the City Core map, which we worked with you this year to create our definition of City Core, the map-specific area, much as we have always had a premium opportunity bonus in our existing policy that refers to, if you hire two-thirds of your workforce from the city of Waco residents, you could get a bonus of 10%. Adding this City Core map area allows us to have a different opportunity bonus for the City Core area, so the criteria there would be if you hire one-third of your employment from the City Core area, so if they're residents of the City Core, you could get a 10% bonus on your grant for any particular year. And then we've also included a map that we have been using for a while. So Designated Areas, this is, as I mentioned, a multi-layer map. This is where we encourage development to happen. The predominant color that you see there, the purplish color, is the State Enterprise Zone, so the state of Texas dictates that to us. That's a layer here. The green that you see is the layer that has changed, and I'll show you a side-by-side here in a minute, but the green layer that has changed is the Community Development Block Grant. So CDBG, which is prescribed to us by HUD, what those census tracts will be, that is the layer that has changed predominantly on this map. The other layers you see here are an orange-hatched area, so out here at Waco Regional Airport, up here at the TSTC Airport, and then predominantly down here at Texas Central Park Industrial Park area. Those are all our industrial parks, so that's the orange hatch. We did make a little bit of change in that one as well to just cover the area a little bit more. And then the foreign trade zones did not change at all, they're the red spots here, one by TSTC, one by Waco Regional, one near the brick, and then the other two locations in Texas Central Park. So for a side-by-side of the previous map, still very similar, because the State Enterprise Zone remains the same at this time, but you notice the green areas have changed on the map. So there's, if we look at the proposed map, there's a space here near Baylor that is no longer CDBG, there's a space over here in North Waco, and then there's other spaces down here in what we would call our industrial district is probably the most predominant change. This space is now CDBG, whereas there was no CDBG in that space at all prior to this map change by HUD. There were other small changes over kind of near the lake and Richland Mall, changes specifically here in the Alta Vista area, so as you come off the Circle of 77 between 35, that was in the CDBG area. It is not now. A portion of it is, but not the entirety of that triangle. So those were changes made by HUD to the map, but since we use that layer in this map, we wanted to go ahead and update this and, and make it consistent. And the other change you'll note that we did is, here in the prior map, we had this, the industrial park hatched just over the areas that weren't annexed, so they were just the city limits, areas already incorporated had the hatch over them, and anything that was not yet annexed into the city, we left blank. The intention would be, as, as we are doing with the project today, and it's projects that are upcoming, is when projects locate inside this area, they, they will annex as they come online, and so it made sense to just go ahead and provide this whole area as hatched, because that is, it is a designated area, we want to encourage development to happen there. We want to encourage development to happen there as well because the industrial parks are made for that sort of development to happen with them.
Milet, I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
Sure.
On the prior map and proposed map, the changes that you said were recommended by HUD, how was that change? What was that change based upon? What was the criteria, I guess is my question?
Well.
And the reason I ask is because it seems like it's just sporadic areas that where the change was made. So I guess what was the criteria for those changes?
I don't know what the formula is for HUD and how they choose the census blocks that are CDBG eligible or not. I don't know if Galen can pull a rabbit out of the hat and come up if he knows or not. I know with state enterprise zone, it's when more than 20% of the resident, the people who live in that census tract are considered to be below the poverty level, that tract is included. For CDBG, do you know how they pick tract?
Good afternoon. The census information is actually based on the American Community Survey information that's done every two to three years. So based on that information, changing the maps can occur. So with that information, that's what essentially caused the additions or changes within the map regarding CDBG eligible areas. And that's all based on a complex formula that HUD uses to determine actually our full entitlement allocations, so.
How does that affect CDBG funding? Or does it affect it?
Well, it does affect CDBG funding from the standpoint of depending on the need, based on your area's low-mob percentages for the overall city, your funding could increase or it could decrease. Now, the other factor in that, of course, is just congressional appropriations as well, so.
Thank you, Galen.
Thank you so much.
So just making sure. So and when was the map changed?
The map actually was updated in spring of this year, spring of 2019.
So HUD included our entire industrial area?
Right.
Into CDBG?
Yeah.
That's, I don't know, I just find that, I just find that interesting.
Hence the barrage of questions. Because we're looking at like.
Well, part of the goal is jobs to people, or people to jobs. Having, being able to invest in an area where a lot of the manufacturing actually takes place is maybe not a bad thing, so. Interesting, though. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So the city core map that I mentioned earlier is really the Imagine Waco map, so it's the city core that we've talked about for quite a while. What we chose to do here with counsel's discussion with counsel was to sort of round out the Imagine Waco map. So if you recall, Imagine Waco map goes from 26, really only from like Bosque Home and over to Mary. So there's a stretch in here, and these pieces on each corner are not included. We have sort of rounded out that map, so you've got a little bit more of North Waco, a little bit more of South Waco in this map area, and it just makes a, just a larger area of our city core, which we believe still is very much our city core. We want to encourage development and employment in this area.
Well, but the, oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So this is just an additional map that we have been using for a while. It was, it's basically all the, the reason it's odd-looking is because it's all the developable lots that are face along our traditional commercial corridors. So you've got La Salle, you've got Franklin, up 18th and 19th, out Waco Drive in a couple of different directions. It's just got a piece. We also have sort of a pod of Uptown in the downtown area, and then also out here near the brick. These were specifically just an attempt to provide a focus on some areas that might not otherwise develop, to provide some lower thresholds of business entry, like investment or job creation, to make that work. Obviously, this new city core will cover a portion of that.
But up until now, this has been kind of the governing document for the economic development target zone, right? We're adding, we're putting the city core map, sort of overlaying it on top of this.
Yes, sir. So this city core map does incorporate a whole bunch of that.
Right.
But this was our initial stab at that. I didn't, so I did not deal away with it. We may, if it makes sense with the strategic economic development strategic plan efforts, but for right now, it still exists, and I think it hopefully reaches out to some folks in areas that city core still does not. And it was really kind of where we thought some small businesses might generate in our older traditional commercial core corridors. So it would just provide us a way to focus on some of those areas. So any more questions about the policy piece of the tax abatement policy?
So for the city core designation, the added benefits or bonuses or whatever incentivization that comes from this area, apart from our other industrial areas or whatnot, I mean, right now, it's just if, if an employer comes in and hires people within this area, they are, they qualify for extra incentives?
Yes, they could get up to 10% additional grant in any particular year. So we would measure the employment roster every year.
And in the rest of the plan, are there any, is there anything in terms of actual job creation or development within that core that is extra, that has extra incentives tied to it as well for actual building within the area? Is that contemplated in this?
It is not contemplated in this document, but I expect that we will contemplate it when we go through this strategic review.
Okay, so I mean, just, I mean, if we're wanting to give bonuses for people hiring people to live in this area, I mean, it'd be, I just want to tie that to data that shows what the actual unemployment is and what the, kind of what the need and supply is within the area to make sure that we're being strategic in how we talk. But I mean, I'm guessing that that's just going to be part of the strategic economic development plan that we're doing, so. Okay.
I did have one question. With the job creation in the designated area, I wanted to see what the rationale behind within the city core, if it's two or more full-time jobs. I mean, is that to incorporate small businesses maybe? I mean, what was the point? Because I don't, you know, I'm just trying to see if we're trying to develop job creation within, within our city core, what's two jobs versus, you understand my question?
Yes, ma'am. When we added the traditional commercial corridor map, so this other, this green one, that's spidery, if you will, the emphasis was to put significantly lower investment thresholds, so either lower job creation or lower capital investment. So it was to be able to try to provide a grant or tax abatement, in this case, to potentially smaller businesses that might develop along these areas. It wasn't to prevent, to limit them to that, it was just to try to have an incentive that was at that level of smaller investment, smaller entry, to get some incentive money. So it was, that was the focus, was to try to bring it to a level of smaller investment or smaller job creation on their behalf that could still benefit from an incentive, and we could still encourage it in some way. There's absolutely, they could be much larger than that and fall into any of the other traditional categories of job creation, the amount of capital investment for real property or personal property, and still benefit from an incentive opportunity.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
No.
All right.
Okay, so we'll move on to our project for today. It's Zinc Power. So this is a project located out in Texas Central Park Industrial District, which we just discussed a little bit. So your location map here, you see the red star. It's located on sort of the cul-de-sac end, if you will, of Marsh Drive, just off Texas Central Parkway, and that shows you Imperial, so just to give your boundary references there. Some concept renderings that they provided, which we don't often get, so I put them in here because we rarely see concept renderings for industrial buildings. But the company, just a little bit of background on them, they were established in 1973. They are headquartered in Germany. They are considered the European leader in hot-dip galvanizing and powder coating, so they work with steel folks a lot. This will be their very first US operation, and they will be called Zinc Power Waco. Through the process of working with this company, the site selection for them ended them at that location there in Texas Central Park. But they do, while they do expect to have customer base right here in Waco with some of our steel folks, they do also anticipate having people that they will work with, manufacturers that they will provide their services to, that range at least from Dallas to San Antonio. They are new to town. They will build a new building, and they obviously expect new job creation. So the details on that really are a $32.2 million total capital investment. So they purchased 23 acres in the industrial park site. They plan to build a building of about 161,000 square feet, roughly 18 million for the real property improvements in the building, and then about 13 million for their business personal property. And they do anticipate creating 100 new full-time jobs by 2023. So the incentives that are proposed for your consideration today are a business grant from the City of Waco, a Waco Economic Development, a Waco McLennan County Economic Development Grant, which is our partnership, as you know, with McLennan County. And then McLennan County is also doing a business grant that would mirror ours, but that's not for your consideration today, but that's just for your, just so you know that they do consider it this morning. So our City of Waco business grant considers both the real property investment, personal property investment. They're doing 18 million in real property, as stated, so five percent, and five years at 90% is what is traditional. That's what our policy allows for. So if you look at the benefit to the city over the first 10 years of that agreement, or the first 10 years of the company's in existence here, you get about 768,000 to the city in tax revenues after that grant. And benefit to the company over that same timeframe of 10 years is about 628,000. For the personal property, we always do personal property at a sliding scale. Personal property depreciates, so these are lower percentage grants, but it's seven years at a declining percentage of 40, 30, 20, 15, 5, 5, and 5% over that seven-year period. So same thing over the 10-year period, this benefit to the city over that 10-year period is 538,000, and then to the company over that same timeframe is about 100,000. So the job creation, as I mentioned, is 100 jobs. That is based over a four-year period, so about 25 jobs a year in 2020, 21, 22, and 23. The average annual salary is about 33,000. There is a minimum wage, the base wage to qualify for WEMAC, but also in this case is $12 an hour, so their average annual payroll is somewhere around $1 million. And then the jobs must be retained for this grant term through 2027. The Waco McLennan County Economic Development Grant piece is proposing a grant of 700,000. That would be split between the city and the county, so 350,000 from the city, likewise from the county. That would be paid to them after their real and personal property investments have been made and on a per-job creation basis, so it roughly is $7,000 per job created after they, you know, build their building and put their equipment in, start creating jobs. They would be eligible to start drawing down on that. All the jobs created under this grant scenario must be retained for the three-year period after they achieve full employment, so we would expect that to be 2026 for this grant. And this has the threshold, if you will, of at least 75% of all those jobs must be created or it can be recaptured. And that's it for the two of those.
On the calculations for, I mean, this is just as we go forward, when we're looking at what we're granting and what our income is on, say, the real property, the calculation is contemplated on a static real investment value of 18 million that doesn't change over time? I mean, I would imagine that real property, we can contemplate it having some small appreciation amount in that, just to kind of give an idea, I mean, that's, you could sort of expect that. And on the converse, the personal property calculation is static at 13 million from the initial investment, which, as you said, depreciates over time, so it probably makes sense to have some sort of depreciation built in on that scale when we're doing the calculations. Just something to think about going forward. But I will say that I like that we're, we have two items. I like that the, the real property is being incentivized through abatements and that the jobs, there is a tangible number associated with the number of each one. I still want to look at the types of jobs that we incentivize and what sort of value we assign to those, but I do like the bifurcation of that, and that, I think that provides some more clarity into what exactly it is we're getting and what we're providing. And overall, I'm glad this company's coming to town. I think they're solid operators and will be an asset to the community.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Thank you, Milet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Our next work session presentation is a discussion of the Creative Waco's accomplishments throughout the community and its contributions to the Waco Downtown Cultural District. We have Fiona Bond with us today, Executive Director of Creative Waco. Welcome, Fiona.
Thank you so much. Thanks for this opportunity. And we have a few handouts. Would it be possible for my colleague Kennedy to hand those to Esmeralda? Dale told me that we may get in trouble with the police if we did that without asking.
And Fiona, before you start, I just want to say, I'm going to do a mea culpa on that one. On the personal property, there is a depreciating value multiplier to the tax valuation, so that's, sorry, on that last item, just, I was wrong on that, so.
I was going to say, wait, that's not in my notes.
Where's your depreciation, Fiona? I want to hear about that. Let's go. Okay.
I've got no horses to declare.
That was my bad on that one.
Well, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Fiona Bond. I'm Executive Director of Creative Waco, and I'd like, before I start, to recognize the members of my team and board who are here with me. So Kennedy Sam, who is our Director of Marketing and Communication, is up here with me. And then behind us, we have Amanda Dyer, who does our Public Art Program, Luanne Jennings, who is over Professional Development, Stephanie Wheat Johnson, who runs the Art Apprenticeship Program, and then we have two of our board members, Chris McGowan and Dale Fissler, who are both with us.
Who?
I'm glad you kept him in the back.
We always bring a surprise, yeah. And both of them have been with us since the start, and actually, of course, Dale stepped down when we started developing a relationship with the city, which meant we had a contract, but he was able to come back onto our board when he stepped down as city manager, so delighted to have him here. Of course, we submit quarterly and annual reports to you guys, which I know you read assiduously, but I wanted to take a chance to really take a bigger picture look at where we've come. We're now, we're four and a half years old as an organization, and we thought this would be a good chance, especially because we're, you know, we're looking to maybe pivot into some new areas in the coming year, to take stock of where we've been, where we've come, and where things are going in the future. And so, wait, I need to figure out how to advance this. So just to summarize a little bit about Creative Waco, we are the local arts agency for Waco and McLennan County, and our mission is to grow and support the artistic and cultural life of Waco and McLennan County. We're four and a half years old as an organization. We were formed in mid-2015. We have two full-time staff and three part-time staff at this point. And a local arts agency is really, it's like an arts council or a commission on the arts. In different cities, it's handled differently. In some cities, it's a department of the city or the county. As we were formed, it was, it was felt at the time that it was better for Creative Waco to be placed outside the city, but we consider ourselves to work extremely closely with you and with our county partners in order to achieve the goals, which, you know, we'll talk about in a little bit, are, I believe, common to all of us. And the way that we enact the mission that is in front of us is really by being a backbone or a, we call ourselves a root and branch organization. That's why I've got a picture of a tree there, because, of course, we think very visually. And that means that rather than being the kind of organization that puts on symphony performances or produces exhibitions, we try to cultivate the environment that makes those things possible for the organizations we already have. We do do arts programming where there is a gap or where there is a need to advance the arts through specific programming that allows us to help cultivate that tree. And so the role that we play is one of bringing together strategy, resources from various different sources, talent, amassing talent and trying to create an environment where we cultivate and keep talent in this community, and then gathering data and analyzing what's working and. working and, you know, where we have pools of opportunity. And then the other thing I wanted to just kind of recap is that everything we do is focused around the cultural plan, which hopefully you by now have in front of you. That, just a reminder that that was pulled together in 2016 as part of our process of applying to become a state-recognized cultural district. It was one of the requirements for that process, but it also gave us an opportunity to really go back to the drawing board, rather than, rather than go to the public for another exercise in community consultation. What the cultural district task force realized, and I know a number of you were involved in that process, was that we already had some really robust public consultation from across different sectors, from the business sector, from the arts sector, from the city, from the county, from our chambers of commerce, all of which had identified some very specific cultural goals, but had not yet formulated a plan for delivering on those. And so instead of going back to the process of public consultation, what we did was take the cultural aspirations that were in all of those planning documents, and you can see on one side of that document, it actually lists all the different organizations and planning documents that were part of that process. And we see this as being very much a living, breathing, strategic document that is the lens through which we shine everything that we do. And it really, I think, filters out into three core areas, and we recognize that this is something that we will want to visit and revisit over time, but I think those three core areas are unlikely to change very much, certainly in the near future. We have tweaked some of the individual deliverables in relation to that. For example, one of the, one of the early goals was to become a cultural district, and so once we were a cultural district, then the goal became maintaining and sustaining and growing that cultural district. So we see this as, this is not an on-the-shelf document, this is very much in front of us informing everything that we do. And those three strategic areas are growing and supporting successful, sustainable arts organizations in Waco, developing a hub of cultural activity in downtown Waco, which attracts residents, businesses, and tourists, and then engaging the creative sector in revitalization, entrepreneurship, education, and economic development. And then on to some of the areas that are specific parts of our scope of work agreement with City of Waco, and we undertake a number of different roles in that contract, each of which are very core areas of our own work. I'm only going to touch on the areas that are part of that contract, although we do do a significant amount of work that is over and above that as well, in terms of developing the arts. The first area that we conduct as part of that scope of work is re-granting on behalf of the city. We have, we do two different types of re-granting. One is for mature organizations needing operational support, and we've undertaken that since October 21st, 2016, and that was really a carry-on of the city's role in doing that. And then the second is the Arts Match Program, which was a new program introduced in January of 2017, and that's designed to put arms and legs on the cultural plan. It's specifically for projects and programs that are going to have innovative or high-impact results in terms of delivering on components of the cultural plan. So when we say innovation or high-impact, that means it does something measurable in terms of the goals of the cultural plan. So just diving a little deeper into that, I want to just look at what that re-granting has done through both those programs on a, on a per annum basis, and this is looking specifically at the last year of funding. So re-granting of $125,000 in the last year has attracted over $2 million of additional funding for those organizations supported, which gives roughly a $16 return for every dollar invested. That's pretty astonishing for a community of our size. The industry norm is one-to-one, so I feel like that's, our arts organizations are working extremely hard to, to bring in resources from elsewhere, and have significantly grown that amount year on year since, since we started working with them. It's impacted 399 professional artists, well over 3,500 students and volunteers, and over 40,000 audience members. We see an average across the board of about 18.5% attendance from outside McLennan County for the arts activities that we support through the re-granting. And since summer of 2017, every single eligible nonprofit arts organization in Waco has won grants at state level, which is also something that had not happened before. In fact, in fall of 2019, we had the largest ever combined state funding for Waco in a single round, which was $76,000, which is a significant increase. I think the largest previous amount had been in the region of about $30,000 in a single round before that.
Fiona, may I ask a question while you're, before you go on to the next slide?
Yes.
The re-granting of the $125,000, who has that been re-granted to?
At this point, that's to the organizations who have historically received funding directly from the city, and that's how that particular program was established. So that is the Art Center of Waco, the Symphony, the Civic Theater, the Cultural Arts Festival. And we are now starting to turn our attention to how we would onboard other organizations to that program.
Okay. And is the amount given, and I hope I'm not getting too off-track here, is the amount given based on historical data, or is it based on work that they are doing in the community? I guess, I don't, I don't know the process.
We have a pretty, a pretty forensic way of evaluating the impact of each of those grants. We have a contract with each of them, which has specific deliverables that are pertinent to each of those organizations. What we inherited was a level that was to be stable for the first few years, where we kind of figured out how to, how to stretch each of those organizations in terms of what does it mean to get to the next level for what each of them are delivering. And I would say they have each done really robust work in figuring out what that means for them. So now, for example, looking at what, things like governance criteria, criteria in terms of how many people they reach, what kind of strategic planning they're doing, that kind of thing. But we're now, we're now three years into that, so we're now at a point where we can start saying, okay, we now know what that picture looks like, and we know the progress that's been made, and so, you know, that's a good point to look at what comes next.
And just to piggyback on that real quick, I mean, historically, those four organizations was set by the council some 25, 30 years ago, and was static, and we, and the city council just renewed at the same level year after year. It was usually, it used to be funded out of the hot tax, and so there were reporting requirements, and the heads and beds were requirements that went with that. Then we shifted it, I don't know, five, six years ago to general fund, just so they didn't have those reporting requirements, and we were just clicking away the dollars, just without any accountability at that point. And so then, when Creative Waco came along, we felt that that was, that that, just re-granting through that, along with the other work they were doing, we were tasking them with, made sense to house those in there. And now, and now Fiona, over the last few years, really has instituted a, that's still legacy at this point, and those organizations need that money and, you know, but Fiona has instituted a better sense of accountability, and like she said, metric tracking, and looking, going forward, how those dollars might be more leveraged, or how we might contemplate doing something.
And I think, I think that's a great idea. I think when you're looking at the work that some organizations do, and the impossibly reaching more people in our community versus others, and, and maybe they get a little bit more funding because of the work that they are actually doing in our community. And so I'm glad to hear that that's the direction that Fiona of Creative Waco was moving towards. I think that's, I think that's great, honestly.
Thanks. And I realized when Councilmember Kennard spoke there that I should also have recognized him as the Chair of our Cultural District Committee, which is why he knows so much about that history. So looking at the AMP Grant Program, that is much more kind of hand-to-mouth, and I would say kind of scrappy in the arts world. Often, those requests come from organizations that are less traditional and less traditionally-funded cultural groups in our community. So those grants of just over 63,500 in the last year leveraged an additional 207,000 in additional support from external sources, which is a, a return of just over $3 for every dollar invested, which again, is well above industry standard and amazing for such new types of projects. Those grants impacted two, almost 2,500 artists, 44, well over 44,000 audience members, and we've also done analysis across the nonprofit arts sector in conjunction with Americans for the Arts, which, which is actually, we've then been able to parse that in more detail working with the economics and business, Department and Business School at Baylor. And so the wider nonprofit arts and cultural sector delivers $63.7 million per year in economic impact and $2.3 million in direct local tax revenue. That is not a multiplied number, that is an aggregated number of the combined spend of all of the nonprofit arts and cultural organizations. That includes festivals, some of our museums, the ones that are in the cultural sector. And then that is combined with the individual spend over and above ticket sales for each of the people that goes to a cultural event of some kind. So that's the amassed amount. So that is a direct spend for the sector. Then one of the other parts of our scope of work with the city is the cultural district and grant-writing promotion and kind of generally incubating and growing the cultural district as part of Waco's identity. So we applied for cultural district designation in 2016. Waco's cultural district application was actually scored the highest in the state, which we're very proud of. It shows a lot of people put in a huge amount of work for that, and it remains the highest score to this date, which we're also very proud of. In 2019, we saw for the first time, because ironically, the, the funding for cultural districts went away the year that we became a cultural district, but in 2019, the state appropriated a new 10 million for cultural districts, which was twice what had ever been appropriated for that purpose before. It was also the very first year that Creative Waco was eligible to apply for a number of grants, because most grants in the arts world require at least three years' worth of 990 returns and audited accounts in order to prove eligibility. And so this was the first year we had all of that historic track record. And so we were delighted that we won a $50,000 grant for the cultural district, specifically for a Chalk Waco Festival, which will become part of next year's Silo District Marathon. There's a photo there of the pilot project, which was, it was a partnership project with a number of different organizations, and is actually a really good example of one of the great deliverables for the cultural district, I think, which is that it brings together sectors and individuals and organizations in order to make the whole greater than the sum of the parts. So for the two days of the Silo District Marathon, two blocks in downtown Austin Avenue area will be covered with chalk art, some by local artists, some by celebrity artists from outside our community, some from schools. There will be opportunities for artists and vendors and businesses to all get involved in that event. And then during the 2018 to '19 fiscal year, Creative Waco brought in, and Kyle's head is right in front of the slide there, so it was 279,000, sorry, thank you, sorry, Madiva, well over $270,000 in grants specifically for programs and projects within the cultural district, which, which is a first for, for our community. One of the other areas that we kind of unexpectedly took on as part of our scope of work with the city is public art, and during 2018 and 2019 combined, we've seen over a million dollars' worth of private funding going towards public art programs for Waco. And I think what is, what is just as gratifying is that in partnership with the city, we've been able to establish a framework for commissioning really high-quality public art on behalf of the community on either city or private property, and where appropriate, that can now be adopted into the city portfolio on completion. And I should say that that $1 million figure for private money going towards public art does not include the Doris Miller Memorial, which is not one of our projects, although we are wholeheartedly supportive of it, but that is in addition to that project, that we've seen that kind of investment. So just to, I've, I've included just a few slides, because who doesn't love public art? This is an example, looking very festive, of a piece by the most famous street artist in Paris, who came and visited us this time last year and painted six pieces on buildings across Waco. His name is Black Laratt. He was the, he was the artist that Banksy learnt from, and we now have a trail of six Black Laratt pieces that can be found in downtown Waco, and that is one of them. The tornado sculptures, and this was a partnership between a private funder, someone else who owned the property, and the city that brought together a vision of creating a memorial to those, to the generation who rebuilt Waco after the tornado of 1953. And that's now part of the city's portfolio of public art, we're delighted to say. And then the zoo sculpture project, which is being installed at the moment, and I think the first actual sculptures are going to be going in next week, weather and all else permitting. Those are just a couple of the pieces that are going to be going in. There are 28. This was a project which started off as being a vision of five or six sculptures going in Pekan Bottoms and has turned into 28 sculptures by artists from across the United States, and actually one from Australia, which will go along our riverbank from the Vietnam War Memorial all the way to the zoo. And then our other public art program is, is really an accidental public art program, and I'm hopefully going to play this silently, but this is, we call it Art Apprenticeship, and this is the program that Stephanie Wheat Johnson behind me runs. And this is, we say that the murals, the public art is the byproduct of what is actually a workforce development program. This is an opportunity for high schoolers from Waco ISD to learn what it takes to take a creative project from concept to completion. So they learn everything involved with being a professional creative. That includes things like how to deal with a client, how to, how to conduct community consultation, how to create a budget, how to manage safety on a work site, all of the different components that are required to manage a project of that kind. And we particularly want to thank Councilmember Bearfield for this year's project, which was in her district. We had two murals in East Waco, and there was a large portion of that was a public consultation component, which again, was something that the students learned how to do, and she created an opportunity for them to speak and be recognized at a district consultation meeting, which was wonderful for them. They learned so much from that experience. And then another area that we conduct as part of our brief is professional development, and this is really about making sure that we are part and parcel of retaining talent and developing talent in our communities, so that just as the opportunities increase, so does the ability to lead those opportunities. So we run the Waco Arts Alliance for Arts Leaders, and that creates opportunities to bring in speakers from outside to the people who do the hard work of doing arts-based programming. We run workshops, networking events, and also joint marketing events, so we're just about to have a joint marketing for Christmas in the next edition of Waco, and, oh, I guess it's out already. And then we also have online resources, such as a creative directory, which covers all art forms, several how-to guides, things, we're about to develop a how-to-put-a-mural-on-your-wall guide, because we get a lot of questions about that. We have a creative summer camp calendar, and we have a document which describes how to publicize an event in Waco, which I urge anyone who knows someone who's running an event in Waco, check that out, it's very easy to find on our easy to find on our website. It saves hours and hours of legwork figuring out what calendars you need to be on and how to publicize an event. We also work with the Baylor Business School and Marketing Department to provide opportunities and interns for arts organizations and arts-based programs. And then we also, of course, run the Work of Artists, which is, this is a new program developed by Luann Jennings, who is sitting behind me. And we just received a notification that we have two years' worth of funding from, from the Tremaine Foundation, which is based in Connecticut, for Luann to do entrepreneurship and incubator-based programs with people who want to run arts-based businesses and who, who basically have great ideas but are not quite sure how to deliver the business side of making that happen. When you do, even if you do a master's degree in an arts-based subject, it's very rare to actually get any kind of business coaching. And so artists come out of the academy with a bigger gap than a lot of graduates in terms of how to actually monetize their talents. And so that's something that we are working with Startup Waco and our various different chambers of commerce to try to close that gap. And we are absolutely thrilled at that two years' worth of funding. And so looking forward, we feel like the arts and cultural organizations that we have have achieved a huge amount in the last four years. But every single art form that we have that is growing and doing its thing in Waco is currently constrained by lack of facilities and lack of infrastructure. That's something that we hear across the board. Visual arts, performing arts, film and digital media, all of them lack purpose-built facilities. And that impacts not just our arts community, but also, of course, the perception of our attractiveness and competitiveness as a community, as a city. We have estimated that if we were simply to do a better job of clustering the twenty-fifteen to sixteen level of arts activity that we analyzed in Waco and cluster it more, more effectively in our downtown area, just that alone would bring an additional eight-point-two million dollars of direct spending to our downtown area. And we can also estimate that the level of activity has at least tripled since twenty-fifteen, sixteen. We're seeing, you know, if you look at the calendar, what, what used to have one event, maybe five events in a week, we're now seeing over-triple that number of arts events in a typical week. But we're not yet doing a good job of clustering it. When we, when we did the more granular dive into the economic impact study that we did with Americans for the Arts, what we discovered, one of the things we discovered, was that when an event happens in our downtown core, it has tripled the economic impact of something that does not happen in the core. The reason for that is because people are spending money on things like food and drink, meeting people. There's peripheral spending because there's an opportunity to do that. Plus, there's alcohol. But anyway, anyway, it's, it's something which has, has been proven, not just in Waco, but across the country, that the more you can cluster activity in the downtown core, the more impact it has in terms of economic development. So looking forward, we are thrilled to be working with the city to work with Keen Consulting on analyzing what kind of cultural facilities might be appropriate, and what does right-size consideration look like for Waco, what might capital costs be, what might good sighting look like. And then they are also looking at operational costs. They're looking at current need. They're looking at market opportunity. So in other words, where is Waco growing and how is our economy growing relative to the arts and cultural sector? And then what are the breakthrough possibilities? What are the opportunities for Waco to take some of the things that it does better than anywhere else and make those more public-facing or make them part of the portfolio of what our cultural offering is to the rest of the world, so that we're not just doing a better job of bringing people in from our region, but also potentially doing a better job of bringing people from across the country and across the world? And then I wanted to wrap up by showing you a short video, which is, this was actually part of our bid to Texas Commission on the Arts, and it summarizes the impact from the previous year, from twenty-eighteen. And I think it gives a chance to see some of the faces involved in doing this kind of work. And it includes our mayor as, as part of it also. Creative Waco is Waco's local arts agency. We exist to grow and support a thriving cultural and creative community here in Waco and McLennan County. But what does that mean?
It means we grow and support artists, from little ones to bigger ones. How? By supporting artists' educational programs and performances. By running art apprenticeship, which is a mentor work experience that offers opportunities for creative high school students and being for our city.
By bringing artists together to learn from each other. By running a program where creatives learn business skills. And by providing online resources like our creative directory. And connecting artists with businesses, services, customers, and audiences.
Last year, our programs and funding directly impacted over two-thousand professional artists and performers, and two-thousand-five-hundred students in Waco and McLennan County.
It means we grow and support arts organizations through funding programs, which help them attract other funding, through marketing and practical support, through professional coaching, and by connecting them with people and organizations who can help them flourish. Last year, we invested one-hundred-eighty-eight-thousand dollars in arts organizations and their programs.
It means we grow and support public art through working with philanthropists, community members, property owners, and our city to turn great ideas into awesome art that our whole community can enjoy.
It means we grow and support brilliant people and ideas. By offering an Arts Match Program, we call AMP, to support innovation and impact in the arts.
It puts arms and legs on our cultural plan. Last year, our Arts Match Program invested sixty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty dollars in brilliant ideas, and those projects were then able to attract another three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand in additional support.
It means that we do research to measure how the arts impact our citizens in their education, economics, and other measurables.
We know the arts have benefits far beyond what we can measure, but we also want to do a good job of gathering data and information wherever we can. Then we work with all our stakeholders to turn that research into strategy that can make a difference to our economy and our community. Waco's nonprofit arts organizations brought sixty-three-point-seven million dollars in economic impact to our community just last year. When arts activities happen in our downtown cultural district, audience members spend three times more on things like food and drinks, which helps our downtown businesses thrive.
And speaking of cultural districts, that's another thing we do. We work with local arts organizations, are partners in the city and county, at City Center Waco, at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and with local businesses to make the most out of the great happenings in our downtown.
In twenty-sixteen, we brought our whole community together to apply to become a Texas Commission on the Arts Cultural District, and we were successful. Waco now has an average of thirty-thousand visitors per week, and we want to encourage each of them to spend one more hour, meal, event, activity, or night enjoying our wonderful city as a cultural destination.
Not many people from outside the community really realize how diverse Waco is in all respects. It's geographically diverse, it's racially diverse, and it's artistically diverse. We want to see artists of all kinds in our community thrive, to be able to make a living through their talents, and see Waco as the base from which they can launch their careers in Waco, in Texas, and beyond.
One of the things that makes Waco unique is that we have Baylor University, McLennan Community College, and Texas State Technical College, all of which have great expertise in the arts. So for a city our size, we bring a lot more to the table than you would think.
We want to be a city that attracts and supports talented people of all kinds. Growing a thriving and vibrant art scene is an important part of doing that. Creative Waco is the arts agency for Waco and McLennan County that helps us turn that goal into a reality.
And, I mean, now I would welcome your questions. But before I do that, I did just want to reiterate how very much we appreciate the, our city council members. I know every single one of you has put time and effort into our programs. And our city management staff who walk alongside us. We have brought the strangest questions to them and the strangest requests, and they have never batted an eyelid. And then, of course, also Parks and Rec, the Engineering Department, all those that we work with at the city. We feel like we are very close partners, the Legal Department. We feel like we are breaking new ground together, and we so appreciate that we do this work alongside people who really care about it.
Questions, comments?
I'll just say that I think art is obviously an important part of quality of life. To establish the quality of life that we want, and quality of life is important for economic development. And the numbers that you presented confirm that today. I think the word for Waco right now is "strategy," from the Sports Commission to Prosper Waco to Creative Waco. This community is operating with a well, with well-thought-out strategies. So thank you for helping us achieve our goals. Not only when it comes to art, but really building the city that we're, we're building. So I appreciate the efforts of Creative Waco and the intentionality and thoughtfulness that you approach, and Creative Waco approaches the challenges we're facing with.
Fiona, I too want to thank you for all of your work and the work that Creative Waco does in our community. I do not know how you find it in your time, in your schedule, to attend every single event that you attend. And my hat goes off to you because you're always smiling and always have a great attitude. And so I just really want to thank you for all the work that you're doing in our community. I love the zoo sculptures that are gonna, about to go up along university parks leading up to the zoo. I think that is phenomenal. I love the art apprenticeship program that you have partnered especially with our Waco ISD students and really cultivating their talents and their future, to see if, if this is a career that they want to move towards. And I think that is needed in our community. I love, I love the work of artists that you're doing, and especially the partnerships that you have done or that you're doing with Startup Waco and the Chambers of Commerce to really show our citizens how to make art a business and how you can be profitable in that. And so, thank you. I, I love the direction that Creative Waco is moving towards, especially just, you know, once again, reiterating how you are reallocating those funds based on merit, you know, going forward, and, and the, the, the vision of how that's moving and just the growth that, that is happening. And I, I want to echo once again Councilmember Meeks' words of saying, you know, we know art is a very important to economic development in our community, in our downtown community. And so really, thank you for, for all the work that you're doing.
Fiona, thank you for giving us this update and presenting this information. As the person who walked the application in with you, it does my heart so good to know that we still are the best. And I know that, that endless hours that you and your team put into it is without question, one of the reasons that we, we maintain that status and probably will for a very long time. It is essential that we continue to feed and foster our arts community, because they are what makes the heart and soul of our city, what builds culture, what brings people together, and what just continues to foster the, the blood flow of a city. I mean, you know, it, it, it all is interconnected. And the fact that we now have a thriving, dedicated organization that sole purpose is to see that happen is just further proof and fostering that we're doing the right thing, and that we have the right people in place to do so. You should be commended, your board of directors should be content, commended, and your staff, especially for the work that you do. So we appreciate you.
And I would like to add, we have some murals in District Two as well that are open. You don't have to just stick to District One.
Two got the first one. Come on now. Two got the first art apprenticeship. So come on now.
Everyone needs a mural.
I'll just say that, that, you know, before, you know, thanks to Fiona, I've learned the, the value both economically and qualitatively of just supporting the arts, both in our community and, you know, just for, for the people, as well as just for the expansion of our, just of our economy and the quality of our life. But I, but I can also say that, you know, by my prior thoughts way back in the day was that it was tangential to all of art economic development. But, I mean, it really is a key cog and cornerstone in the work that we do community-wide. And I think, you know, just as, you know, Dylan mentioned, the, the Sports Commission and some of the other initiatives we've been doing, going on in this, in our community, that, that our arts deserves that same kind of attention and investment. Because as Fiona's presentation showed, I think we all are about things that leverage the dollars that we put in. And, you know, sixteen-to-one multipliers, eight-to-one multipliers, twelve-to-one multipliers, those things that really take a dollar and expand it and generate extra activity within our community are those things that we, I think we really need to be purposeful about investing in. And, and again, and given the, just the environment that we have in our downtown, in our community these days with Magnolia and others, and just that creative atmosphere and that focus on all things artisanal, which again, I don't understand, but I have learned to appreciate. I, it's, I, again, I commend the work that she's been doing, and echo what y'all have said, and just, I do think, you know, kind of going forward, we do need to give it, I feel, the same level of importance, because it has the same economic impact as some of the other things we've invested in.
I'll just echo what everybody else is saying. Fiona, I think the concept back in twenty-sixteen when I got on council for Creative Waco, and what she's done with it, is just, I think it's exceeded all of our hopes and expectations. And I see everything being tracked very intelligently, and I've seen you guide projects gently and sometimes firmly in the right direction. And I just appreciate your, your, your energy and your experience in, in, in helping out Waco. And it's, I'm, I'm, so, I think everybody's very pleased with, with the job you and your staff have, have done. But thank you for, for what you're doing for Waco.
So finally, I mean, everybody's pretty well said it, but, you know, I just think we recognize that, both from a quality of life and economic development standpoint, how important the arts are, the companies that we're trying to attract, and the talent that we're trying to recruit and retain here in Waco, all care deeply about that. And the fact that we have so much public art going up around Waco, I mean, just the, the pace of it is astounding. And I just so much appreciate the work that you and your, your staff. You've got a very capable staff and a great board, and we appreciate everything that you've done, and thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we're gonna move to executive session. We're not gonna try to do this final presentation, I think.
Okay.
We've got at least another, probably a twenty or thirty-minute presentation.
Okay. Well, totally apologize. We are looking forward to your presentation. I know it's no fun, right? It's still no fun to get all prepared and then have to cut off for two weeks. So I'm sorry about that. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll now recess work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the City Secretary at 5:08 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, Attorney Briefing, Text Up in Meetings Act, Section 551.071. Lease agreement with Waco Landfill Gas Associates, LLC, doing business as landfill gas partners. Two, real property, Text Up in Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Three, Economic Development, Text Up in Meetings Act, Section 551.087. And four, personnel, Text Up in Meetings Act, Section 551.074. A, nomination and appointment of individuals to McLennan County Appraisal District Board of Directors, and B, City Manager Wiley Stem III. We are now in executive session at 5:09 PM.